Assume it'll tell us.
My hoodie.
Okay, I'd like to call the August 14th Planning Commission meeting to order. Start off with roll call.
Jan Agusta.
Colleen Cruz.
Gavin O'Toole.
AJ Summers.
Lou Tatora.
David Box.
And if there's anyone who has public comment on an item not on the agenda, if you can speak up, and I have no idea how we know if anyone's online. I don't see anybody. Hey, doesn't look like there's anybody online. Doesn't look like anybody is in the audience. So we'll start off with PL 2025-0240. Is there a applicant presentation on this?
Yeah. I don't see the pointer, sorry.
I can click through for you however you want, so.
Okay.
Or do you want your packet for the other materials?
Oh, no, I think this is fine, thanks. All right, good evening. My name is Chansey Keenan. I'm an architect with Mountain Architecture Design Group, here to talk to you about the Heavenly Days Dental Application for Conditional Use. Staff did a great job with their summary, so I'll try to keep this brief. The Voyage family is looking to expand their existing dental practice, which is based out of northwestern Colorado into Steamboat Springs. And their practice in Steamboat, they're looking to include retail services as well as walk-in services alongside traditional dental services. So they're looking at Unit 206 in the Olympian Building. I think we're all probably familiar with that, but it does show up on the screen here. It's that large building on the corner of Yampa and Fifth Street. And Unit 206 is on the ground level where the red shading is shown. The building was built in 2016. It was sold to a local family in 2018, who was using it as a family office. The use was pretty infrequent as a family office, and the window shades are often pulled down. So we're looking to kind of just revive that area of the building. Dental use is limited in the CY2 Zone District, so tonight I think we can address some of the potential impacts that staff pointed out as we were working through this project together, primarily parking and pedestrian activation of the building frontage. And I think that we've addressed all of those impacts for a positive result. So first of all, parking in the staff report, parking is technically met. The existing use for office requires one space. And the medical-dental requirement for parking is similar, so we're not required to add any additional parking. There is that one space in the parking garage below the building. I think it is worth pointing out that we do have parking near this site, which I think is unique for the location on Yampa Street. With the bridge on Fifth Street over the Yampa River, we have plenty of parking at Hallison there. There's also some additional parking on Yampa Street where the park is, those larger blue dots that are on the screen. And then, of course, on-street parking throughout Old Town, downtown. We also have two public transit spots located. Those are those smaller blue dots, so close proximity to transit. And then, obviously, the established sidewalk system that is in downtown, as well as proximity to the core trails. Hours of operation for this use will be typical for a dental office, which staggers with nightlife, so I think parking is kind of mitigated for that, typical events in the evening, et cetera. The city is also promoting fewer cross-town trips, as we all know, in multimodal transportation, so we can kind of lean into that when we're looking at parking requirements for clients and customers. I believe staff will likely park in the Hallison area. It's just a short one and a half blocks to the space for staff parking. Can we move to the next slide, Toby? The second item that we want to talk about tonight is the activation of the building frontage. As I previously mentioned, this was a family, is a family office right now, and the office shades on these large windows are often pulled entirely closed. And there's no really consistent use of the building. So we're really excited to open up these large windows. In the staff report, the space was quoted as kind of like a dead space in the Zone District, so I think any activation is going to be a positive improvement. We intend to have retail displays in those windows facing Fifth Street. There are large glass doors facing the corner of the alley and Fifth as well, with transoms and side lights. So I think we'll be able to engage with the pedestrian frontage and encourage activity and promote vibrancy just through like opening up those windows, and again, having the lights on and activity with the walk-in business and retail space. Can we move to the next one, Toby? Or actually, sorry, can we go back one? On this floor plan, it's a little tricky to see on this screen, but over here, we do have that floor plan. And you can see there are those large windows facing Fifth Street. And then the door is another, like I said, a glass door, so lots of transparency there. The blue shaded area is what we have designated as retail space, so folks can walk in for just like walk-in services, like I said, and retail items. And then the treatment rooms are the three rooms kind of on the lower right corner of the page. So those face windows as well. We do have some privacy film that we're suggesting for the lower half of those windows, so that you still get the transparency above and see the lights on and see activity like inside and outside the building. Okay, now can we move to the next one? Thanks. So these images just show those large windows. And the image on the bottom kind of highlights that there will be a lot of transparency where it's shaded blue is where we'll have like completely open glazing as well as the door. And then the images on the right side of the page there are options that we could consider for that glazing, so that it's an artistic glazing, not just like a straight frosted glass. Can we move to the next slide? Some of the services that will be offered for walk-in users, again, to activate that frontage, are like Botox treatments and fillers, whatever, some teeth whitening. I had a whole list on that other page. Tooth gems, if anybody needs a tooth gem, you can pop in and get a tooth gem. And then some of the retail items that would be for sale are like facial creams and lip balms and specialty toothpaste, bath accessories, those kind of items, vitamins, supplements, et cetera. So let's see. One of the main criteria that we need to address when we're looking at a conditional use is how it would further the direction of the community plan. I believe we meet a lot of the community plan's goals with this application by being pedestrian-oriented. It's a mixed use, which adds a service to downtown area that's not currently provided in this area. And it will serve locals as well as visitors. The vibrancy is achieved through the retail services and walk-in services. We also meet the goal of providing health services downtown to minimize cross-town vehicular trips. I also like that this is year-round service, not just during peak seasonal months of the year. Additionally, promoting local small businesses is another goal of the community plan that is well met. The Voyage family has an established dental practice. There are a couple of client testimonials in your packet that speak to that. And I believe while this is not only a dramatic improvement, it will also be an asset to our community. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Does staff have a presentation?
Sure. Toby Stauffer, Senior Planner. As was mentioned, this is an application to locate a medical dental office in the Olympian Building within the pedestrian-active building frontage on Fifth Street. It's Unit 206 on the northwest corner of the alley, of Fifth and the alley between Lincoln and Yampa. Use is currently used as a private office. It's not open to the public. A medical dental office is a limited use in the CY Zone District. So this review is a conditional use because the office will be located within the pedestrian-active building frontage. As was mentioned, they will offer wellness and retail products in addition to dental services. The retail section will be towards the front of the unit along the Fifth Street and Alley intersection. And hours of operation should be typical daytime office hours. As was mentioned, Unit 206 is a 1,300-square-foot office that has one dedicated parking space in the building. The current office occupies the entire unit and has a parking requirement of one space per 900 feet. The proposed medical office will occupy the entire unit and has the same parking requirement. So based on Section 300-F1D, the proposed use only has to provide parking for any net increase in required parking for the new use, because the office has the same parking standard as medical office, and the medical office use is not expanding. There's no net increase and no additional parking required. The purpose of the commercial Yampa District is to provide development along Yampa Street that's complementary to and different from the Old Town development. It's a mixed-use district for moderate-intensity commercial uses like retail, restaurants, lodging, as well as office and residential uses that are compatible with those other active uses. The purpose of the pedestrian-active building frontage is to keep and enhance the pedestrian activity in these commercial areas, achieve some sort of vibrancy for a critical mass that is successful for a commercial district, makes for a successful commercial district. Office uses can have less active street presence than other commercial uses and can appear as dead space, similar to what the current office may look like now. About 50% of the building frontage is proposed retail space with the open windows, and the remainder will have clear windows, as mentioned, with some frosted glass below to mitigate the impacts from this use. So we find this use to be compatible with the direction of the community plan and the downtown plan. There are a few goals that we believe that this project meets in the downtown plan. It meets some land use goals that would encourage diversity of land uses and support locals and tourists. In the community plan, some other land use goals to integrate a mix of complementary uses and infill and redevelop core areas like Old Town. Transportation uses to encourage mixed-use development for walkability and limitation of cross-town trips. And some special planning area goals for Old Town to increase the amount and mix of retail downtown. Again, the CY District is a mixed-use district that should provide uses that are complementary to other Old Town uses. This street-level office should contribute to the active streetscape by adding that retail space on the corner and activating the office space with signage and window treatments. And hopefully more customers than what has been there previously. We don't think that it should have negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Again, an office use can be less active than a retail or restaurant use. However, this space will have a retail space and should hopefully provide some improved pedestrian engagement in that area. The unit is located in the Olympian Building at the corner of Fifth Street and the alley between Lincoln and Yampa. And within that block, the majority of the uses are offices, as well as the first floor of the Olympian Building along Yampa Street. So while this block could be redeveloped to revitalize, to realize that community vision, it's not yet the vibrant, active space that our plans hope for. So we don't think that this proposed office will be inconsistent with the other uses in the area in that block and should not cause any detrimental activities, and it should add activity. So we support this and suggest approval.
Thanks, Toby. Commissioner, questions?
Toby, can you clarify for me? The other offices there, there's other offices there. Are they, do they also have conditional use for those offices?
I would imagine that they did have to get conditional use approval. I can't say for sure. I didn't research all those office spaces. But office at the ground floor, pedestrian level, anything on the ground floor would require a conditional use approval.
And then this location was a 206 office. Is that, that was vacant for a number of years? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
It has been used as a private office, so it hasn't been vacant. It just hasn't been used very frequently for an office use. So it has appeared vacant, though it was occupied.
And do you know if it had a conditional use?
I don't know that, no.
Any other questions? Okay. Anyone have any public comment? I don't see any. Not that I can see. Jennifer's there. Okay, so any last words from the applicant? Toby?
No, thanks.
Okay, I'll close comment period and turn it over for deliberation by the commissioners. Motion and/or deliberation.
I'll start. I think this was a really well put-together presentation. I think a dentist's office is going to be a vast improvement from the family office that's been there probably as long as I've lived in town, and I've never seen a single person come or go from it. So this has my complete support.
I concur. And I think it's going to be a good improvement over what's there, and so.
Concur. Are you open to a motion, Mr. Chair?
I am open to a motion.
Motion to approve PL 202's 50240 to locate a medical dental office at 35 Fifth Street in the Olympian Building within the pedestrian-active building frontage of Fifth Street.
Second.
If a motion, a second. Any additional comments from the commission? Okay, no additional comments. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And it passes 6 to 0.
Finger count.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item, there, it looks like there are three items. Do we want to take these all at once, Toby, or?
I think that they should each have their own discussion, but we can probably give a general overview of the property just once. But probably each should have its own hearing and discussion, I believe.
Okay, so does the applicant have any problem in doing a presentation on all three at the same time? Okay, let's do that. Yep. So this is PL 2025-0150, 151, and 149, Northwest Colorado Health.
Right, Chansey Keenan again, Mountain Architecture Design Group for Northwest Colorado Health. We have three items, as mentioned, on the agenda tonight, and they're all tied together. But we'll start with the conditional use, and I might make a little bit of a reference to also a community plan amendment and zoning map amendment that support this conditional use. So quick history on the project. Oh, do you have the file, Toby? Quick history on the project to kind of paint the picture. So the project is located on Rolling Stone Drive, which we'll see in just a second if you're not familiar with that. It's on the corner of Rolling Stone and Pine Grove Road. Again, that red highlighted area, that's the connector between, say, Angler's Drive and Pine Grove, right there. So it was a single-family home for decades, owned by the Selby family. And 2008, the Selbys sold/donated the property to the Visiting Nurses Association. At that time, we did go through a conditional use application for a group home to be operated by the Visiting Nurses Association. The initial idea was that the home would function as a hospice house. It has bedrooms on, it was a home, so it has bedrooms on the upper level with bathrooms, a kitchen, great room, all the normal, you know, home functions. And then on the main level, the ground level, they wanted to use that as kind of like an adult group gathering space. This was never technically executed, as it would have required inpatient licensing, which wasn't possible. So instead, it was initially staffed for hospice respite patients on a donation basis, but that became too costly. So they moved to a model where it was open for hospice and respite patients and their families if they could provide a 24-hour caregiver. So that function was on the upper level again. Initially, they had planned to use the downstairs for adult services, but that never panned out. So around 2013, the home, health, and hospice staff moved into that downstairs space and used that as their offices. At this time, the upstairs was used for patient and support groups such as bereavement. And it was also used for family and hospice patients living in the area, as it continues to be today. In 2023, it was decided to move the home, health, and hospice staff offices out of that lower level, the ground level, and into their leased space above Steamboat Medical, so that all of their Northwest Colorado Health offices can kind of be in one location. And they've been leasing that downstairs, I call it downstairs, it's a ground level, to Queer Futures, which is part of Better Tomorrow since 2023. Recently, the upstairs has been used to house traveling dentists and nurses and families of hospice patients all associated with Northwest Colorado Health. So we refer to Visiting Nurses Association originally, but that is, I guess, a subsidiary, or has maybe been Northwest Colorado Health. or has maybe been Northwest Colorado Health operates and owns the building. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Toby, do you mind going to that next slide? I think, or maybe the next one even. Thank you. So I've got some floor plans here that we can refer to if you're kind of confused on how the orientation of the uses, but those are photos of the house. It still looks like a residence. There were some minor changes made to it in 2008 when it was donated to the VNA. The use of the property caught planning's attention, code enforcement's attention, because the use, as just described, has evolved over the years, and they have not gone through a formal process to update that. So here we are today. So we, as a team, reviewed the current and future use with Northwest Colorado Health and really identified that upper level to fit into the definition of a dormitory use because they are housing unrelated people in the three bedrooms. They each have their own bathroom, but they're using a shared kitchen, dining, great room space. And then community space on that ground floor, as that's being leased to Better Tomorrow and Career Futures. Some of the programs that Career Futures has in that space are safe support group spaces for youth and adults, a gathering place for folks, suicide prevention groups, substance use recovery groups, and similar functions like that. So it's really kind of a critical, a great that they have a space to come and gather and feel safe. Those uses, dormitory and community center, are not allowed in the RE2 Zone District. So we did work with staff to review the use table and identified community commercial as the most appropriate use zone district for the uses that we're talking about, dormitory and community center. Not only are those uses consistent with the surrounding area, the neighborhood, but they also further the direction of the community plan. Several of those goals, the community plan goals that are met include mixed use, residential and non-residential, a community center that serves a broad community base, it promotes service-oriented development, specifically human service programs, Career Futures, nonprofit Northwest Colorado Health, and the density and diversity of the housing on that second level. We tried, but we could not identify any negative impacts of the use. And as staff says in their staff report, this kind of straddles the intensity of use. It's like a middle ground. The residential could be less intense than could be allowed there. The community space could be more intense than what's allowed there, but it's all kind of supported and compatible with the vision for this area. So with that, I'll thank you for your support and open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Toby?
Sure. Again, Toby Stauffer, Senior Planner. This is a request for conditional use of the existing building and site as a community center and a dormitory. So this one will be a decision. So we'll have additional discussion later on the zone map amendment and the community plan amendment. It is on the corner, the property is on the corner of Pine Grove Road and Rolling Stone Drive. It is zoned RE2 residential estate 2. It's adjacent to properties that are zoned, Community Commercial and Multiple Family 3 across the street. The properties are zoned CC, MF, and CN. This is a developed property in an existing mixed-use building with an existing parking area, has been known as the Respite House, and has provided these services since at least 2008, when they had their last conditional use approval. Though the proposed uses are similar to the existing uses, as was mentioned, the project evolved over time, or the uses evolved over time, and this came to us from a code enforcement case that was just identified when we were talking to the staff, to the applicants about what they wanted to do, what they were doing, and what they wanted to do. As was mentioned, there is no intention to make any changes to the site or to the building. They will use the building and the parking as is. And this project is being reviewed with a zone map amendment and a community plan amendment, which we are recommending approval of. So this use has been reviewed for compliance with the CC Zone District and with the mixed use corridor feature land use classification. And again, the proposed uses of dormitory and community center are both conditional uses in the CC Zone District. A community center is defined as a facility that's provided by the city or a nonprofit for community activities. As was mentioned, it could impact residential uses by having more activity than a residential use might have, or it could impact commercial uses by providing a lower intensity institutional uses with less activity than a complementary commercial use. The dormitory is defined as a managed residential facility that is designed for housing more than six unrelated people with shared kitchen and bathrooms. As a group living residential use, a dormitory could have impacts to other less intense residential uses because it could be more intense, or it could impact commercial uses by providing a lower intensity residential use instead of a complementary commercial use. So the purpose of this district is, of the community commercial district, is to provide areas for community-wide and multifamily, commercial and multifamily residential use with some residential development between nodes, and there is a mixed-use node just to the other side of this property headed towards Highway 40 and Pine Grove Road. We do find that this use will be compatible and support these uses, finding that they meet the criteria. Let's see. The community center and the dormitory are consistent with the goals and policies of our community plan, including land use goals to promote mixed-use pattern that balances residential and non-residential uses, infill and redevelopment of core areas, and a cohesive mixed-use neighborhood that serve year-round residents and visitors, and land use densities that support transit. Again, the purpose of the Zone District is for commercial and multifamily use and multimodal activity and compatible development between the nodes. Again, the community center provides a community-wide need and is compatible with other commercial and residential uses, especially those that are nearby. And the dormitory supports these Northwest Health functions and should be managed so that it should not have impacts on the adjacent properties. It's also compatible with other commercial and residential uses in this area. Regarding criteria three, the proposed use should not have any negative impacts. Again, the surrounding area is a mix of multiple-family residential development and small commercial buildings that provide similar healthcare or healthcare-adjacent services in proximity to the hospital. The community center could impact residential uses, however, we find that this is a commercial use that is more compatible with what is there. And this community center use has been active for at least a year without any impacts of note. The level of intensity is also compatible with the adjacent multiple-family residential and medical office uses. The dormitory is complementary and compatible to the adjacent uses of nursing home and medical offices on either side. And so the small size and characteristics of this property should mitigate any impacts that it might have, and we do recommend approval of this conditional use.
Okay, so just on a procedural basis, do we want to just discuss the conditional use, or do we want to talk about the?
Just the conditional use for now. You would make a decision on that, and then we could talk about the other two projects in the next section.
Okay. Well, that opened it up for any questions from commissioners on the conditional use?
Yeah, hopefully this is, this is maybe a dumb question, but we're doing a conditional use in a zone RE2, correct? But then we're changing the zoning later on to CC, commercial. So the conditional use, I'm kind of confused. Shouldn't we, I mean, shouldn't it, don't we need another conditional use once we change the zone to CC?
The current uses that they're proposing are prohibited in the RE2 Zone District. So they are not allowed. So the only way that these uses can happen is by the zone map amendment. If it would help your discussion on the conditional use, we could have a discussion about the zone map amendment and future plan amendment, but we'll probably have to make some recommendations on those separately. So if you need some more information to help you make this decision, we could do that.
I think that might be valuable in terms of talking about that and even the zone map amendment, if we could. Is that fair?
Yeah, I was just going to say, staff's review and recommendation is based on the CC zoning. So just the way the agenda is set up, this one got put on the agenda first, but I think it probably will help you all if we go through the community plan amendment, which then informs the zoning decision, which then allows you to make that decision.
This conditional use is conditional use.
In CC.
I mean a CC.
Correct.
Right there, cleared it up.
Yep. And I think Toby just confirmed for me, there's a condition of approval that would suggest the effect of, if you were to approve the conditional use, it's contingent on the zoning also being approved.
And that's in the staff report, I believe, as a condition.
It is, yes.
Thank you.
I almost feel like it's cleaner just to talk, like, assume, like they had to, just assume that it's CC-zoned, and if it's CC-zoned, would we approve this? Because if we don't approve the CC zoning, or if planning, if.
Recommend, yeah.
City Council doesn't prove it, then it's all null and void anyways, right?
Right.
I don't know. Cleaner conversation.
So do we want to go through with the CC?
It's up to you.
Yes, that would be, I'm on the opposite side. I think it would be easier to go with the zone first because then we're discussing whether the zone makes sense, and then do a conditional on that zone. That's for me. I can go either way, but that's.
Okay. Actually, I agree with John, and I'd like to do it that way if we could.
Okay, so I think then, as Rebecca mentioned, the future land use map would be what we would talk about first because that informs the zoning. So I'll give Chansey a chance to make a presentation on those two projects.
Okay, thank you.
Agenda item number three? Or however.
Yeah. Number three. And number four, however you want to do it. Yeah.
Okay. So let's see, can we go to the fourth page of that file that you had open, please? And while she's getting that to populate, the subject site currently holds a residential land use classification on the land use map, which is the map on the left that has Fish Creek written really big on it. Our request tonight is to update that to a mixed-use corridor land use category, which would allow the past, present, and future uses of the property to continue. Additionally, it would be more consistent, changing that classification would be more consistent with the land class of the surrounding area. In the staff report, Toby highlights that the land use map is, the intent of that is to group properties together as opposed to having single properties. And it's kind of hard to see the map, but our subject property is kind of an island of this residential land use classification amongst mixed-use corridor classifications. I think additionally, in hindsight, this maybe should have been updated in 2008 when we went through that conditional use change for the property. Updating the land use map furthers the direction of the community plan by supporting mixed use in this desired area, which is desired in this area, furthers the goal of delivering public services to our community, balances residential and non-residential uses, provides diversity of housing, also activates that ground level, which is a goal for this general area with the use of the community space, and also provides the human service programs that are important to our community with hospice, career futures, and a nonprofit. So overall, the land classification would be more appropriate on these collector streets as a mixed-use corridor as opposed to the residential land use classification, and the update results in consistency with the surrounding area and long-range vision of the area. Toby, I'm sure you have more to add to that.
Thank you. Toby?
So the request is, the future land use classification of this property will change from neighborhood residential medium, which is a classification that includes a range of residential uses and some neighborhood-serving uses, to mixed-use corridor future land use classification, and that would allow a mix of medium-intensity residential and commercial uses. The existing development on this property has been functioning as a commercial use for several years and could fit into either category. However, future use and development should be compatible with the proposed designation of mixed-use corridor. Existing and future uses would be compatible with that designation, so we do recommend approval of that. Additionally, we find that the area community plan should be in need of the amendment because most land use categories are applied to a group of properties to indicate the general desired character of an area, and this property is unique in that there is a land use classification applied to a single property. That method is inconsistent with how we apply this future land use in other areas of the city and the other areas around it. So we find that this amendment is necessary to group the categories more effectively to understand the character of that area. It'll be more consistent with how the land use map is used throughout the rest of the community. Also, for more than 15 years, the property has been used and developed to be consistent with this mixed-use corridor classification. And as was mentioned, this probably should have been updated in 2008, but we didn't do that at the time. So we're, it's sort of cleaning up what we believe the area should be. We do think the amendment is consistent with goals and policies of the community plan that were mentioned. Again, the surrounding area is a mix of multiple-family residential development and small commercial buildings that provide healthcare or healthcare-adjacent services. So it would recognize these existing land uses and their compatibility with the surrounding land uses. The property is adjacent to two collector roads, and it is an isolated node within that mixed-use corridor. So the neighborhood meeting residential designation doesn't achieve that vision of the mixed-use corridor and the higher intensity development that we're looking for there. The mixed-use corridor classification would be more consistent, and it's already more consistent with the surrounding area and what's existing. So we believe that designation better achieves that overall vision. And we do recommend approval of that community plan amendment.
Thank you. Okay, with that now very clear, if we could ask our questions, and I assume now we can ask the questions of the zone map amendment and the plan amendment. Any questions? Just for my own clarification, what we're proposing is this is going from RE classification to CC.
Say that again? Sorry.
The proposal is to go from RE classification to CC.
That's for the zoning, so we didn't go through the zoning too much, but we would change this zoning from RE2 to CC. We do find that the zoning would be consistent with that mixed-use corridor classification. It would allow, it would be consistent with the existing and proposed uses that are there. The existing uses are currently prohibited or non-conforming. This, the change in the zoning would allow the, let's see, get that information. The principal building would become conforming with regard to the south side setback with the change to CC zoning. It would remain non-conforming with the water body setback for Fish Creek. The accessory building would remain non-conforming, and the parking lot would become non-conforming. We did have one question about that that came out to you. The parking lot would be non-conforming because it is in front of the building, which our standards in the CDC require buildings to be in front of the parking. So that would be a new non-conformity that would be happening. However, that development on that property has been functioning for many years and shouldn't have any impacts, and it should be more appropriate with CC zoning. Again, as we've mentioned, the CC district is a mixed-use district that is consistent with the surrounding area. The zone change from RE2 to CC does have some advantages. Again, the property is in a mixed-use area, it's adjacent to collector roads, which is appropriate for higher density rather than low-density, large-lot residential. It does further the community plan, as it would be more consistent with the existing and proposed uses, and it would be more compatible with a mixed-use transit-served area, and we already have urban-level services there, which make it appropriate for commercial development. There are some standards that apply to development in RE2, however, development in CC is required to meet more standards and manage impacts to the surrounding properties. to the surrounding properties. The application of standards on this property is an advantage, especially because of its adjacency to Fish Creek. The northern part of the property is within the flood plain, and there's, I think, Floodway, also on the northern edge of this property. There would be a greater variety of uses that are allowed in CC that are consistent with the surrounding area. Again, the disadvantage is that the parking lot will become non-conforming. However, we don't feel that there should be an impact from that. And we did, again, we reviewed this with the future land use map, assuming it was a mixed-use corridor, and find that that is, this zone map amendment change would be more consistent with that future land use map amendment to mixed-use corridor. So we are recommending approval of that as well.
Thank you. Would the applicant want to add anything on the zoning part? Beyond Toby's descriptions?
I think it's all been pretty well-covered, other than highlighting that the use of the property promotes human service programs, which are identified as critical to the well-being of our community in the community plan. And these uses are not allowed in the RE2 zone district, however, they are encouraged in the CC zone district. And I think we all want those services to continue in our community, and it'd be great to have them located in this area.
Thank you. Now that all three have been explained, do we have questions from commissioners?
Go ahead. Yeah, this is for the land use map, Toby. On page two of your staff report, on the bottom, it has the current or future land use listed there. I'm trying to understand, and I drove by the lot, I drove by over there. There's 1580 is mixed use, 1480 is mixed use. This one is listed as 480, but then there's a 1560 in there. What is, it almost looked like, when I drove by there, it looked like 1560 was part of 1580. But is here, is that 1560 a separate?
It looks like it is a separate property. It looks like they share, if you look at the zoning map that's right above it on that page, you can see the aerial a little bit better. It looks like they share a parking lot, but it does look like there's a separate property line there. So I'm not sure if they're owned separately or in conjunction, but as far as I know, those are medical offices generally in that area.
Okay, I see.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question for staff. Just make sure I understood one thing you said on the future land use plan. You said if we were doing this all over in 2008, you'd recommend this change at that time, would be your professional opinion?
Yeah, in 2008, we had the current plan that we have now, which was adopted in 2001. So I think it would have been appropriate at that time to change the zoning and the future land use for these uses. It also, as we mentioned, the use, it was a little different when it was approved. It was sort of a smaller function, so it was probably more similar to the residential use. So that may have been why they didn't make these changes at that time. As was mentioned, it's evolved over time, so it is a little bit more appropriate now to do that. But I think that could have been a path they could have taken in 2008.
Great, thank you. For the applicant, in the rainbow is an email back and forth with myself and staff, and one of the comments from staff is, after we issued a notice of violation, they submitted these applications. I appreciate the use that you all have in this property. It's needed in our community, but this costs staff time and our city money to wait for the violation to be issued. Would you like to comment why that didn't happen earlier?
Why the applications weren't submitted sooner, or why we didn't come to the city prior?
And the comment was that it seemed like, once the notice of violation was issued, you were working with the city, but then a notice of violation was issued, and then the applications were submitted. Were they being worked on already? Or I'm just concerned, great asset to the city, just, did it take the violation to take action? Or was there work being done already? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know that the owner knew that they were in violation necessarily. You know, this isn't their area of expertise, so until it was brought to their attention. And then we've been working, you know, it has taken a while to put these applications together, but we've been working diligently to identify what the appropriate use categories would be. Do they plan to evolve even further, you know, in the next three, five, 10 years? That's a little bit unpredictable, but at this time, we see these uses continuing well into the future. And then realizing that the community plan amendment would be part of it, you know, it kind of snowballed in that way. So does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, great.
I'll follow up on that and ask staff their perspective on violation followed by application, or everything happening concurrently.
Yeah, I think at the time, I looked back in our files when that code enforcement case was started. We talked with the applicants in 2023, in the fall of 2023. And I think that they were maybe at that time looking at putting the career futures office space in the ground floor and kind of asking some questions. And so at that time, we had to do a little research to see if they were still within their approved conditional use, because the use had been operating. So we weren't sure how much it had changed. So we had to do a little research there. It was a fairly specific conditional use approval. So it kind of fit, but didn't quite fit. So we did a little research there for a while, and then we sort of determined like, well, you still really need to do this zone map amendment and the community plan amendment. So we sort of took a note on it, and the staff that they had at that time said, yeah, yeah, we understand that. We're going to do that. And then, from what I understand, or what I recall, I think there was some turnover in staff there. Maybe some messages were missed as they changed staff. Then we changed some staff too, with our code enforcement staff, and we're trying to keep up with it. So we always could have been a little better. But oftentimes, how we start some of our code enforcement cases is sort of with the softer approach. We don't go straight to violation, especially if we're, we just sort of determined this in the course of daily business. It wasn't like a complaint or an egregious violation that was causing a life safety issue, which might have required some more immediate action. It was just like, hey, these land use approvals are not quite right. Let's get the map fixed. So all of that combined, you know, we did kind of take some action, but then it had been a little while, and so we decided to send that notice of violation because we didn't want this successful use to continue too much longer without being, you know, sort of accurate and recording the conditions on the ground for the use approval and for the zoning in the future land use map. So the notice of violation did serve as an activation on this project. That's just sort of how it went.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions?
Is there anything different about the way we review projects if they come in because of a code violation?
I think it depends. Definitely depends on sort of how the applicant is working with us and sort of the level of impact of that violation. If there are some strong concerns from the neighbors or actual concerns, physical, you know, immediate concerns to the environment, to public health and safety. So it just sort of depends. And we do have the ability to charge double fees to any code enforcement application, any development application that is a result of a code enforcement action. So we have that as a motivating factor, plus any sort of court violations. If we've had a different process, where we maybe had a violation, went to court, and then they have an agreement with the court that they have to do these development plans, we might handle those a little bit differently, because they have to usually meet deadlines that are determined by the court, or else they get fined a lot more because they were found to be in violation with a court decision. So this is prior to all of that, so handled a little bit differently.
Yeah, I'll just follow up on that and reaffirm what Toby said. Sometimes the internal process might be different, but just to be clear, that when you're looking at the criteria for approval, the fact that there's a pending or open code enforcement case shouldn't really influence your decision and your findings on whether they meet the criteria for approval or not.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No more questions? Any public comments? I see no public comments, so well. Is there anything the applicant would like to say? Toby?
I think, right now, I think we should probably go back to the conditional use hearing and make that decision, and then, you know, make your decisions for recommendation on the other two. If you want to, I guess if you want to do that in a different order, you're welcome to make those recommendations first and then make your decision, as long as you make probably three separate decisions.
Okay. I am comfortable that we have heard all three. I do think it might be best to do the zone map first and proceed with a deliberation on that. So I'll close it for public comment, and we'll go now to, I think, deliberations on PL 20250149.
Sharepointed question. Did you mean the zone map change or the future land use plan change first?
I was going to go to the zone map, but.
The future land use map usually does dictate the zoning, so that would probably be the best order of operation.
Correct that, and we'll do deliberation on 20250151, and that is the plan amendment.
I think this seems like a great improvement to the future land use map. That makes a ton of sense. A house does not make a ton of sense on that corner. So, yeah, that seems very straightforward.
I agree. I think the direction the community is taking along Pine Grove Road is a mixed-use corridor. It's one of the busiest streets in town, I'd say. And that makes total sense to switch this to mixed use as opposed to medium-density residential.
I agree, and I would add the importance of what is happening there in terms of the need of the community as well, fitting in with the plan amendment.
Agree.
My comments, you know, kind of go with land use and zone map. I know we're only talking about the land use at this point in time, but I concur with, you know, staff on that. In particular, you know, the fact that it's a, you know, multi, it's a multi-use collector street, you know, there, right there says that that's not really residential. To me, you know, collector streets are commercial. And in addition, I think the fact that Fish Creek is right there, that to me, that puts a clear delineation between the zone maps on which side. So, you know, so to me, the fact that Fish Creek falls, that is, Fish Creek is there is a good separation between the land uses. And I say the same thing for the zone.
Okay. Any further deliberation on the plan amendment? Or none? I'll call the question.
You're calling, so you're calling.
Oh, we need a motion. I knew we did.
You need a motion.
I will.
I had already made the motion in my mind.
I will make a motion. I recommend the city council approval of PL 20250151, a community plan amendment application to change the future land use classification from neighborhood residential medium to mixed-use corridor at 480 Rolling Stone Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other further comments? Then I will call it the question.
Aye.
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 Okay. Now we deal with the zone map. Any further questions, comments, comments on, since we're in deliberation?
So to clarify, we're talking about PL 20250149?
Yes.
Yes. 49, yes.
I've moved to recommend approval of PL 20250149, a zone map amendment to change the zoning for Lot 7 Selby subdivision at 480 Rolling Stone Drive from RE2 to CC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any final comments? I'll call that the question.
Aye.
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 And the final trifecta is the PL 20250150, which is the conditional use that caused John consternation that made us go backward through time. And any comments on the conditional use now?
I'm in your chair. Can I make a motion? I mean, this is the motion chair, isn't it?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
You're going to make a motion.
Move to approve PL 20250150, conditional use application to use the existing building in sight at 480 Rolling Stone Drive as a community center and a dormitory with the following condition as stated in staff's report. Continuation of the uses shall be subject to the approval of ZMA PL 20250149.
Billy, we should make some comment about the fact, the fact that it is, it's a conditional use over to do dormitory, but the fact that this, you know, this building is now non-conforming in terms of parking. But I will, you know, my statement is just basically, okay, to clarify that, it is non-conforming, but it is actually pretty well-covered by the vegetation in that particular area. And so that helps alleviate the fact that it is non-conforming in that form. So I'm comfortable with that.
And when the vegetation is not there, the snow's right there too.
I'd take that one step further, you know, with changing the future land use and the zoning. If that property was ever to be redeveloped, which it may, it's now going to come into conformity with the rest of the corridor.
Well said.
So I would second that motion that was made.
Just as advice, shouldn't make a motion before John has commented.
Mr. Chair, you accepted my motion, so.
I did, just because I knew he was going to say something.
The motion's here. We talked.
We did, we did. Okay, no further comments. I'll call that to question as well.
Aye.
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 Passes 6-0, and that was PL 20250150. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a director's report today?
I don't have, well, I have just a couple things to mention, no real report, but just wanted to mention to you all to keep you in the loop. We did have a presentation to city council this last Tuesday. I had a work session regarding a study that we have underway for potential linkage and inclusionary zoning requirements. So we're just sort of at the beginning of that process, exploring that, working with some consultants to complete the next study. There'll be a lot of policy discussion at the council level, and if that's something that council ultimately decides to move forward with, it would result in some amendments to the community development code. So I wanted to just get that on your radar, because that might be something that you're tasked with working through in the future. So if that's interesting to you, try to follow that along, but I'll try to keep you all updated as we go. And then also, I think most of you are probably aware, last Tuesday, there was quite a bit of, quite a lengthy discussion about short-term rental enforcement. So I'm working with legal staff right now to kind of sort out the direction of council and see what changes to the licensing code may need to be required. That's not something that's within planning commission's responsibility, but I know it's of interest to you all, since many of you worked on the initial overlay zones and policy recommendations to council. So again, as we move forward with that, any changes, I'll make sure to keep you all up to speed, just so you're in the know.
Thank you. And I'll suggest that, I don't know, I mean, give it some thought. Is it, is it time to relook at our overlay zone and our ordinance since we're relooking at it anyway? That's my question to you.
Want to crack it right open?
Yeah.
Well, it's certainly something that we can do. We've talked about, I mean, I think from. We've talked about, I mean, I think from a staff's perspective, we've always intended to evaluate the effectiveness of the policy. Honestly, you know, it's just implementation's been long and time-consuming, and we haven't felt like we're really at like a good spot where, you know, a good sort of landing spot to take a look at that. But I think it's coming due for that, to see, you know, are we having the intended Are we moving in the direction of the goals of the initial policy to begin with? So, yeah, I think it's, we're getting to a point where we need to start doing that. I think we need to sort through the rest of this enforcement discussion with council first, and then we can probably start working on that.
Yeah, no, I think we have, there should be a lot of data now, and we should have a much better feel, so I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, let's make sure, make sure I fully understand council's direction and what that will impact, some data, some numbers. So let's, we'll get that sorted first and make sure that we're on the right track and following council's latest direction, and then we can go from there.
Okay, we have a couple of public hearing minutes.
Follow-up question. Is it fair to say that we would not be seeing another appeal here until the rest of the STR is being hashed out with staff and council?
No, I don't think that there is any actual tie to the appeals that you all hear. When things come before you for an appeal, it's not an appeal of a licensing decision, it's an appeal of nonconforming abandonment, and that really isn't, that is not the subject of what the council is currently talking about. What they're talking about is prosecution and municipal court for operating an STR without a license. So not quite the same. So, I mean, we could see an appeal at any time.
So the, just my own clarification, so they're not, the directive, as far as you know, is not to look at the nonconforming status?
No, the discussion that was, had last Tuesday, on the 5th, was explicitly about municipal court prosecution. And what we take to municipal court are violations of the licensing code pertaining to operating without a license. So that is, that is a very narrow subject of their discussion.
Okay. That's very interesting. I would have thought council might have wanted to look at the nonconforming status as well. But that's obviously up to council.
My understanding is council was responding to some of the public comment that they started receiving recently, and that was very specific to the level of fines and the two-year bans and the outcome of municipal court prosecution.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have public meeting minutes for June 12th. I don't know who was there, we're not there. Looks like everybody was there, except for John. And Gavin.
And AJ.
June 12th, it says AJ, Gavin, and John.
Oh, yeah, okay. So someone other than me, I guess, could lay.
I don't do motions.
You don't do motions?
I don't do, I don't know the words. I need a cheat sheet.
Move to approve the public hearing minutes from the June 12th, 2025, planning commission meeting.
You do second?
I'll second that motion. I know those words.
Motion and a second, all in agreement. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then we have a public hearing minutes from June, looks like 26. And everyone was here.
I will motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes from June 26 of 2025.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Everyone approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion to adjourn. Not even...
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everyone approve?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Too many words, I don't know.